And welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, January 19th, 2016. If you would please join us for the pledge.
The pledge legally is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clint.
Here.
Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
First item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
There's an amended set of minutes before you. There's a highlighted motion there, and then there's also an amended ordinance for the Crooked Lake No Wake. A little better formatting, a little more clear what we're actually asking you to do.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda noting that there are no changes to the agenda but updates to Paccadite.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Manning. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. The very first thing on that newly adopted agenda is our Snowflake Days proclamation. We have some very special guests in the chambers this evening. So I'm gonna come down and greet you if you would come forward. I'm not gonna leave with my agenda, I'm leaving with the proclamation. How's that gonna play?
Well, I am thrilled. It's our 2016 Coon Rapids Snowflake Days, and we have the Kingpin and we have the Kingpin, the grand marquee, Coon Rapids marquee. So Diane, you wanna talk about the, you want me to read the proclamation first?
I would say I'd read that first and then we'll talk about something else.
Well, you're in charge. We'll be good.
Jerry.
Your microphone's on.
Well, how about if I turn the mic on?
Is this your first proclamation?
No, we haven't had a working mic for a while.
It hasn't just been user error. Whereas, the 2016 Snowflake Days celebration includes numerous events over three weeks for all individuals, including a medallion hunt, Mayor's Cup Simulator Golf Tournament, Movie on the Ice, Cookies in Canvas, Family Fun Day at the Coon Rapids Ice Center, Community Saw Hop, North Stars Alumni Hockey Game, and many, many others. And, whereas, Snowflake Days will kick off with the Mayor's simulated golf tournament at Bunker Hill's Golf Course on Thursday, January 28th. And, whereas, Snowflake Days will culminate on Saturday, February 13th with the Children's Carnival held at Sand Creek Elementary School. And, whereas, many volunteers and community organizations have dedicated their time and talents to create this exciting winter celebration for the benefit of all citizens of Coon Rapids. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council hereby proclaim January 28th through February 14th, 2016 to be Coon Rapids Snowflake Days. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are encouraged to participate in this community celebration and enjoy the numerous activities and events proclaimed this 19th day of January 2016. How many years have you been doing this, Diane?
This is my 15th.
15th year? Okay. Well, I'm gonna let you talk about it a little bit here then, and I'm just gonna offer you thanks, though, for all of the work and effort you've put to keeping this celebration alive for the city. So here you go.
Thanks, Mayor. I wanna thank Bruce and Teresa for being here with me tonight. I'm really excited about Snowflake Days, it's always such a fun time. We hope the weather cooperates this year and it's not quite as cold as it has been the last couple of days. We have some really fun things going on this year, some new things. I'm just gonna go over a few of them so people kind of know what's out there. Our annual Mayor's Cup Simulator Golf Tournament, Tim Howe is the chair for that, and I understand they're almost filled up, and that's always a big event. Something new this year, our first weekend, which is Friday, the 29th, is a Movie on the Ice. We are putting, it's based on our movie in the park that we do at Sand Creek each spring and each fall. We're actually gonna put the screen on the ice and people can sit in the stands, and we're going to be showing Mighty Ducks. We thought it was really appropriate.
So we don't have to actually sit on the ice?
No.
Sit in the seats.
That's right. That's right. So, we're really excited about it, and we hope the kids come out, and we thought Mighty Ducks was a good choice for our first year since it has some connection to the old Cook Arena, so we're pretty excited about that. And there's no charge for that. We are hosting that free of charge. Of course, the adult medallion hunt is gonna be going on again this year, and I want to thank the Community Strength Foundation for sponsoring the $500 prize. That will actually start on the 30th of January, on that Saturday, and I understand that the clues are almost done, so they'll be on the website. And, let's see, what else? Kids' Medallion Hunt will be going on again this year, thank you to the Coon Rapids Firefighters Local 1935, they are sponsoring $400 in gift cards for the two kids that find the medallion and win that, so we're really excited about that.
And that's gonna include tours of the fire station, too.
That's correct. Hot chocolate and tours of Fire Station 1 on EGRIT. So, we thank the firefighters for doing that again. The Saw Hop is happening that first weekend, there's a lot going on that first weekend. So, that'll be hopefully bigger and better, we're doing some fun new things, our old DJ is back. We're bringing back for the second time our Cookies in Canvas, which is patterned after the Wine in Canvas for adults. It was a huge success last year. This year, we've moved it to the ice arena, and so the kids will be doing their own little canvas that they'll be painting, and we'll have hot chocolate and cookies for them to take home with them. So that should be a lot of fun. Ted Schmoki, my other partner in crime, I wanna send a big shout out to Ted because he's really helped me a lot with all of this. He's hosting the Bean Bag Tournament at the Legion again. Something new that was mentioned in the proclamation, a family day at the Crick. The folks over at the ice arena are putting together all kinds of fun events. We're gonna do sleigh rides or hay rides, depending on what it looks like over there. I understand they have a big, brand-new ice trail on the park side of it, I haven't been up there to see that yet. We're working with the fire department to do a big bonfire that night out there, and we'll have some games and activities for the kids. So we hope everybody comes out for that, that's it, from 3:30 to 5:30, and then Family Skate will be later that night. So, we want that to be really successful, so we want everybody to come out for that. Something else new this year, we're going to try, we always have to throw in some new things to keep everybody interested. We're going to do an indoor kids fishing contest at the ice arena. I'm not gonna tell you any of the details yet, first of all, because we're still working them out, but it's really gonna be fun and it's gonna be really original, and there's gonna be cash prizes and gift certificates and other things, and that'll be updated on the website next week after we finish that. So we're really excited about that one. So, they'll be fishing off the ice, that's all I'm gonna say about that one. G.B. Layton and Tim Mahoney are back this year for the acoustic concert, and that one is almost sold out. Ted only has a few tables left, so if you're looking for tickets for that one, you should give him a call, because by this weekend they'll probably be gone. And of course, we have the Junior Royalty Pageant. We're doing the third annual Minnesota North Stars Alumni Hockey Game. This is gonna be the biggest one ever, we had the Minnesota Wild sign on today, and they're going to be sending out an email to 65,000 of their patrons tonight, so I'm not sure if the ice arena will hold everybody, but we'll try and get them in there. So we're really excited about that one. This year, it's going to benefit not only HeartSafe, but we've added Defending the Blue Line, which is a fabulous organization that supports military kids and hockey and Play for Patrick, we've also included, so that one should be pretty great. I'm gonna let Bruce talk about his pickleball tournament when I'm done. Chris Niebler's doing a snowflake bingo for the seniors. The Chili Challenge is back this year, a whole bunch of the organizations in town are participating, so we want you to come out for that. And then we end with the Children's Carnival on the 13th. It's really not three weeks, it's only two weeks, but three weekends, so we can fit all the fun weekend stuff in, it's hard for people to do stuff during the week. So, lots and lots of things, check out the website, it's coonrapidsnowflakedays.weebly.com, everything's on there, it's as up-to-date as we have. Snowflake Buttons will be on sale starting Friday, and I just wanna thank some of the people who have worked with this, John Piper, Tim Howe, hi, John, and Bruce Sanders, Ted Schmoki, Teresa Leggett, John Leggett, there's others who am I missing, there's a lot, I'm sorry for those that I'm not mentioning. There's a lot of people that have come to the meetings and been involved, and we really appreciate it. We've had some really good years, and I hope you all come out and have fun again this year. There is definitely something for everybody. I'm gonna let Bruce talk quickly about the pickleball tournament.
Quickly. You all have no idea how much work the committee does, and Diane personally, and I wanna thank all of the other marquees before me, one being Jerry Wright, and Ted, John Leggett, Ted Schmoki last year, and I don't wanna miss anybody, let's see, Wells, I think, was in on that. Councilmember Wells, pardon me. Two things I wanna mention, is the hockey game with the North Stars alumni. I have refereed that game for years, apparently it's NHL game this year, sanctioned practice, and they don't want old guys falling down on the ice, dropping pucks unintentionally. It is, if you've never been up close to these gentlemen, the level of athleticism and their abilities, their athletic abilities is just incredible, even some into their 50s, you can just see what incredible athletes they are and how special they were. I am running a pickleball tournament, and I hear on the street every day, what is pickleball? Come to the middle school gym, starts about 9:30 on the 7th, and you'll find out. We have pickleball players, men's and women's division, coming from the entire metro area, St. Cloud. Last year, we had some from South Dakota, and I don't know as far, I think St. Cloud to the west, yeah, to the west. So, it's always fun. There's something for everybody in the pickleball, or I'm sorry, in the snowflake days, and just come on out, everybody complains, there's nothing to do, lots to do. So, we'll see you all there.
Just one final shout-out to the Boulevard Bar and Grill, they're really bending over backwards to host the after-party, the meet-and-greet for the NFL players and the community, so a big shout-out to those guys over there, they've been fabulous. And thank you to you, the City Council, everybody for allowing us to do this, it's really a lot of fun, and it encompasses about two months of my time, so thank you.
So, I would like to point out that, did you see how nice the new marquee uniform is? You know, you gotta turn around, you gotta model the thing, yeah. Councilman Wells was marquee, I was marquee when you were, we didn't have that really nice black one, but it's good.
Were you a marquee?
I was.
Sorry, I missed you.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you very much, and yeah, everybody join 'em for the fun, join up for the fun. I will try and move these next agenda items along a little bit quicker. The next item on our agenda is to approve of the previous minutes January 15th meeting.
So move, second.
Motion by Manning, second by Wells, to approve the minutes from the January 15th City Council meeting as amended, or the new ones, however you wanna say that. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All abstained.
Yep, okay. Motion carries, one extension, Councilman Johnson. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. First item on that is to approve the expanded use of city-used credit cards, and city purchasing policies require employees to request a purchase authorization, I'm not gonna read all this, we're just streamlining this quite a bit and making it easier for folks to buy things in the 21st century, rather than the old paper invoices there. So we're going to recommend that council, or that council authorize the city manager and finance director to authorize certain employees as users of credit cards for city purposes. The next item on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 1622 and 1623, adopting miscellaneous 2016-1 appealed assessments, and approval of Resolution 1622, 1623, adopting 2016-1 miscellaneous special assessments, contested miscellaneous assessments collected over one year and three years. Item five, to approve the final payment for Project 15-25, Hoover Elementary Park Trail Reconstruction. All of the above dates and amounts are reasonable, let's see, okay, so we're approving, approval of change orders and final payment to Northwest Asphalt in the amount of $3,363.98 for Project 15-25 Hoover Elementary Park Trail Reconstruction. Item six is to approve change orders and final payment to Northwest Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of $32,256.14 for Project 15-11 miscellaneous but two-minute repairs. Consent agenda item number seven is to approve a change order and final payment to North Valley Incorporated in the amount of $32,250.13 for Project 14-4 Street Reconstruction. And, under consent agenda, item eight, which is related to the Coon Rapids Boulevard Trail We're looking at approving final payment to Barber Construction in the amount of $24,097.71 for Project 15-23 Coon Rapids Boulevard Trail Rehabilitation. Item nine, we are looking at appointing L. Hofstadt as Chair of the Safety Commission, and we would like to mention that there are now five vacancies on the Safety Commission, if anybody's looking for an opportunity to serve your community. Item 10, authorization to purchase four police vehicles from Nelson Auto Center under the state contract, and all of the old vehicles will be repurposed into community service or other various areas around the city, it looks like. And, the last item on our consent agenda is to receive and approve the 2016 Pay Equity Report as submitted. And, if nobody needs an explanation of that, that's the end of the consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilor Manning.
I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Clint to adopt the, or approve the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider Resolution Number 16-7-9, awarding a contract for the 2016 Well Rehabilitation Program, and we're looking at awarding a contract to Bergerson Caswell Incorporated. I don't know, does anybody need an explanation, or are we...
Your Honor.
Councilor Manning, or Councilor Clint, I'm sorry.
You do need...
Apparently, I do.
I move to adopt Resolution 16-7-9, awarding the contract to Bergerson Caswell for $453,825.
Second.
Motion by Clint, second by Geisler. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 13 on our agenda, and I can't tell you how exciting it is to see this on our agenda, consider easement agreements for Project 14-27, 85th Avenue Trail Construction. And, I did have a quick question on this. This is constructing the trail on the south side of 85th Avenue from East River Road to the railroad tracks, I'm just saying, giving the location. We've been trying to this for many, many years, we went for DNR grants, kept getting turned down, and now it's part of the park referendum. But my question is in the details here, because we're approving three easement agreements, and it says the total amount to acquire the necessary temporary and permanent easements is $15,859.50, but all three easement agreements are written as just $1, another valuable in consideration. Is that typical, or how are we spending $15,000? It should only be three bucks then.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when it comes to, there's somewhat personal information involved in this, so there's a separate agreement that goes in, so while they're getting $1 good and valuable consideration, there's a companion agreement that describes what that other good and valuable consideration is.
Ah, okay, thank you, I was just kinda wondering about that, because it seemed like we had all the other details, and, all right.
Your Honor.
Councilor Manning.
I move that the City Council accept permanent easements to facilitate the construction of the proposed 85th Avenue Trail as detailed herein, and authorize the execution of the agreements between the City of Coon Rapids and landowners of the properties listed above.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Mr. Mayor, how far out are we on construction on that?
Mr. Mayor, item number 16 is to authorize plans and specs and authorize for bid.
I knew that, thank you. All right. Item 14, to consider introduction of an ordinance regarding brew pubs, breweries, taprooms, distilleries, and cocktail rooms. And, basically just bringing ourselves into the 21st century here for municipal ordinances. I didn't notice anything in here for Sunday growler sales. Is that something that we should be addressing in this introduction?
This is the zoning portion of it.
This is the zoning portion.
The licensing portion will be coming in February, which will provide for Sunday sales and the actual licensing of taprooms.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything. Okay, good.
We will ensure that you'll be able to buy a growler on Sunday.
Hate to have to drive to a noke to do that.
Your Honor.
Councilor Clint.
For the establishment that has come forward wanting to come into Coon Rapids, will this zoning make the property they want? Are they gonna be able to make that work?
Councilmember Clint and councilmembers, this would apply to all the commercial districts in the city, as well as the port districts. These would be allowed as permitted uses in the community commercial, general commercial, and regional shopping. It'd also be allowed as permitted uses in the industrial district, as well as all the ports.
Seems like that should cover it. Thank you. Waiting for a motion and get that, yeah, thank you. This is just an introduction, so, in planning case, 15-36, the Planning Commission recommended the City Council introduce the attached ordinance establishing regulations where brew pubs, breweries, taproom, distilleries, and cocktail rooms can locate and establishing definitions of common terms, so we will consider that introduced. Item 15, the one that comes up, it seems quarterly, is to consider an introduction of a no-wake ordinance on Crooked Lake during times of high water level. We're not gonna go into all the details of this, only that the DNR needed the language cleaned up, so that's what we're doing, and we will consider that introduced. Item 16, consider Resolution, Resolution Number 14-27-8, accepting plans and specifications for 85th Avenue Trail Construction and authorizing solicitation of bids. And, the advertisement would be published on February 5th and 12th, with a bid opening scheduled for February 25th. Bid results and a recommendation for contract award would be presented to council March 15th. Once a contract has been awarded, trail work can begin on April 11th, or as soon as road restrictions are lifted, and would be completed by June 24th, 2016. Very specific dates, no spring start, summer finish, very specific.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, that's the dates that get put into the contract, where you are very specific, and then depending on what happens with the weather, then obviously those dates move from time to time, but that's pulled directly from the contract language of substantial completion.
Okay, thank you. I think we're looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to recommend the adoption of Resolution 14-27-8, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for 85th Avenue Trail Construction.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And item, wait a minute. So I have a 17 on the agenda, but I don't have a 17 in my packet, so...
Considering the plumbing code, each action, I think it's an introduction of another ordinance.
Okay. Oh, oh, we missed a new one. All right, so we're considering introduction of ordinance adopting the 2012 Minnesota Plumbing Code. The Minnesota State Plumbing Board has adopted a new edition of the Minnesota Plumbing Code set to go into effect January 23rd, and the city must revise Chapter 12, Section 12-202, Sub 21, in order to be current with the new law, and, so, we'll consider that And that brings us up to open mic and public comment. So I'll just do a quick, open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the City of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Open mic is not a time for problem-solving or reacting to the comments made, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only. Questions from council will be for clarification only. If necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forwarded to the speaker. So do we have anybody here for open mic? Come on up to the podium and tell us who you are, and you'll have three minutes. You would just give us your name and address and tell us what's going on.
I'm Abigail Foss, I'm with the Anoka Middle School for the Arts, and we are participating in the Sam Sung Solve for Tomorrow Contest. The goal of the contest is to use our STEM skills to figure out a way to solve major issues in our community. Our teacher, Mrs. Marshall, has already completed the first two phases of this and won $20,000 for our school. The issue we're battling is homelessness. It's an unseen problem in our community, and through this project, we hope to raise awareness to the issue and to provide shelters for homeless people during those cold winter months.
Hi, I'm Caitlin. We are currently building the homes, or half-scale, like a... Hi, I'm Caitlin. We are currently building the homes, or half-scale, like a model of it. The full-size ones will be eight by six by eight feet, about half of the size of a college dorm room.
Hi, my name is Chloe, and we would like to know, like, what the legal issues are, and like what we could possibly run into, and where we could possibly place these things in the future. Thank you. And we would really like you, like, if you could please sign those release agreements, so you could be in the video.
Might need to refer this to council. Review of the agreement.
I was trying to decide if I should have you look at it or Dave, you know?
I think you're already.
All right. Was, was, was that it?
Yeah.
Okay. We're probably not gonna have any answers for you tonight. But this is, this is awesome. It's a, it's a noble, noble venture.
I'll say something really quick. I'm Becky Marshall. I'm their teacher. I live in Ramsey, so I don't know if you want my address.
No, that's fine.
Mostly, we're just trying to raise awareness on what we're doing at our school. We have 38 students total participating in this. And if we win, we wanna kind of, kind of reach out and see if there's maybe somewhere for these to go some days, someday, if they get to build the full-size ones, so. Any information that you guys could share with us is great. We've already started to talk to the city planner and things like that about the legal issues we might kind of run into, so. Do you guys have any questions for them, or me?
I was, I thought, you're building a half-size homeless shelter. What?
They're already very small, but then we're, we're building kind of a prototype right now, so we'll see if we get to the next phase of the competition. We're competing against the other 50 states. The 51 states is what they're including, so.
Wow.
So, yeah.
Counselor Clint.
Is this, you go somewhere for this competition, or is there some way to follow how this is going?
Yeah, we were published the first phase in ABC newspapers. Right now, I'm kind of expecting to hear it from the Star Tribune pretty soon, because we are the state winners or the state finalists. So, if we get to the top 15, we get to go to New York City and present our project, a small group of us, and then if we win that, we move on to Nationals in Washington, DC. So, right now, we've won $20,000, but we could win up to $200,000 in technology for our school.
Demmer?
Just curious, it says it's a STEM project, and so if you could maybe just explain what science, technology, education, math have to do with homeless shelters, that'd be great.
Sure. Well, we've been trying to kind of test different designs using their STEM skills, so today, they were testing different shapes of the houses. We're trying to find different insulation types to test. We're trying to use eco-friendly design, so we're trying to get a free solar panel donated to us so that we can run the electricity through, of the lights at least, with solar power, because we're really interested in renewable sources. And this is just our community outreach group. We have seven different groups working on different variables. And so, I'm just really proud of these young ladies for getting us here. And it's just being here and spreading this issue around, I think, is already some really good work that they're doing, so. That's kind of the secret science that's going on behind the scenes, and this is just one piece of all the different groups that are taking place right now, so.
Thank you.
Keep us informed.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Anybody else here for open mic this evening? All right. We don't have any reports on previous open mics. We appear to be up to other business. Mr. Stemwaddle.
Mayor and councilor just mentioned, since it's still fitting with our previous speakers there, that there'll actually be a panel on homelessness in Anoka County here at City Hall this Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, being sponsored by Anoka County Family Promise, Hope for Youth, and Stepping Stone. Really, it's a discussion about those who've experienced homelessness and what the different agencies are doing about it in this community. So, it's open to anybody here in the council chambers, again, 2:00 to 4:00 PM this Thursday, January 21st.
Perfect. Glad you brought that up. I forgot to put it in my calendar. Other business coming before council? Do we want to have Chief Piper do just a little update on that financing for the Hanson Bridge? Just try and give that, get that other word out there on what's going on? He seems like he's got her down.
I, I have this down. I thought a half hour ago, I think. Mayor, councilmembers, last Friday, Governor Dayton announced in his 2016 jobs bill that the 50% of the funding for our Hanson Grade Separation, in other words, the bridge over the railroad tracks just south of Epiphany, 50% of that, we're asking from the state, and he included in his jobs bill. So, that's real exciting, good news for us. And now, when the session starts on March 8th, they'll be discussing it for a couple of months, and then March, May 23rd, the session ends. And hopefully, when that is all said and done, we will have the 12.6 million from the state to go with the other 12.6 that's already been accounted for. 30% is through the county's Transportation Improvement Board, 10% from Anoka County, 5% from the city of Coon Rapids, and 5% from BNSF. So, it's a real exciting time, and we hope that it all comes together over the state capitol, and all the elected officials can agree that it's money well spent to fund half of our bridge.
And Mr. Hammer, remind us, when, when, what's your best guess for our residents that will be impacted by this bridge to get a look at it?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the plan now is for somewhere in the middle of March would be the first open house whereby we go through the, the need for this and alternatives that have been studied. And then, somewhere in the summertime, July, August, we'd be closer to what design we're, we're zeroing in on. And then, again, in the fall. So, there'll be three opportunities. I guess if there's anybody out there that's interested, they can also contact me, and I will be also reaching out to those that will be directly impacted. I guess there'll be lots of people directly impacted, but those that may be part of an acquisition process.
At least 12,500 cars a day will be impacted by it for about a year, right?
That's correct.
All right. Any other business coming before council this evening? Hearing none? Yes, Counselor Geisler. Oh, yes?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to also point out that on Tuesday, January 26th, next Tuesday, right here at the Civic Center, the Alliance for Sustainability will be having a program here, starting at 3:30 and going until approximately 6:15. During the day, it's mostly for staff. It's really all of the players in Anoka County and what each of the different cities in the county are doing from a sustainable practice, learning from each other, educating each other. And then, I think in the evening, more around the 5, 6 o'clock period, that's more for, say, councilmembers, commissioners to kind of hear the same story. So, here at City Hall, next Tuesday, the 26th, starting at 3:30 in the afternoon.
Any other hands over there? Any other council business? All right. Get out there and celebrate Snowflake Days. Accept a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.